Okay. Everyone ready? I'll call the meeting to order. First thing on the agenda is to approve the, or approve the regular agenda as presented. Does anyone have any questions, issues? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. It passes whatever. How many we got? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Okay. I guess the next thing is strategic planning. We're gonna hand it over to our consultants and go from there.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's great to be here. It's great to be here. Just to provide a little bit of background and context from how we got to this joint meeting. The EDA is doing some economic development strategic planning. And we started this process back in June where we essentially had a level-setting meeting to lay out trends, demographics, and current market dynamics within the city of New Prague. We ultimately compared it against similar communities to see what other markets look like for housing, for jobs, for employment, wage levels, stuff like that. We also reviewed the SWOT analysis that was recently completed with the comprehensive plan update that I believe was approved by the council back in February of this year. So ultimately, starting this process in June, we had that level-setting meeting. We started working on creating goals from that discussion, refining those goals, and starting to draft strategies. So how we look at an economic development strategic plan for the city is you have your goals, you've got your strategies, and then those strategies help you achieve the goal. But what helps you achieve the strategies are action items. And speaking with staff and speaking with the EDA, they wanted to make sure that they were on the right path with what the council wanted the EDA to do with this economic development strategic plan. So before we started crafting the plan, before we started coming up with the action items, we wanted to share what the goals are, what the strategies currently proposed for each goal are, and to see if there's any refinement that's needed before we continue forward. So that's ultimately why we wanted to get a joint meeting together to go over these goals, to go over these strategies, to see if we hit the mark. Is this the direction that the council wants the EDA to go? Do we have to make any modifications to it? So with that, today's discussion, we're gonna review ultimately the goal discussion that we had at the July meeting with the EDA. And then we'll overview the goals and the strategies applicable to each goal. So, the goal discussion back in July, we have five goals. It was strengthen New Prague's industrial and commercial tax base. The second one was promote redevelopment opportunities and reinvestment in existing properties. Three was establish New Prague's competitive edge. Four is promote a full range of housing diversity. And five was secure resources necessary for economic development. Ultimately, there were, it was a good discussion, but through that discussion, we did refine two goals from that list of five. And it was number one and number four. So if we go to the revised goals, the first one, we wanted to, you know, tone down the language a little bit. New Prague has done an excellent job with building out its industrial park, with attracting businesses to the city, ultimately, you know, fostering entrepreneurs to start a business and keep those businesses here. So we wanted to soften the language from strengthen to foster a more supportive environment for not just, you know, new businesses that might be coming to New Prague, but also existing businesses that are here, to make sure that those businesses are retained. The fourth goal was, that we revised, was to promote a full range of housing diversity. Because the EDA does not have housing and redevelopment authority powers, there was a conversation about, well, do we look at options available for the EDA to support housing development within the city, knowing that it doesn't explicitly have the tools to do that? That ultimately falls to the city council and the housing redevelopment authority. But, under state statute, you can give EDAs HRA powers. And so, we started framing the discussion around, well, is it worth it to review if we should go down that path? Consolidate the EDA and the HRA together so that they have a little bit more latitude when they're trying to achieve the necessary goals of this economic development strategic plan? Making sure that New Prague has the talent in the workforce here, and places for people who work within this community, to live within this community, as an option. We just wanted to refine goal number four to make it more of support and review housing opportunities within the city to meet the demands of the future. So, it's not necessarily something that you have to do, it's more like an evaluation at the end of the day. I know there were some on the EDA who were a little hesitant to put housing powers with the EDA, but there were some members that said it might be interesting, knowing the housing shortage within the community. When they do these business visits, the one theme that comes up is housing availability. So that is why it's being included as a goal here, but with just a softer tone. So, I guess just to open it up to the group, before we start diving into strategies, are there any immediate thoughts about the goals that we have listed here? Is there anything we're missing? Is there anything that you don't necessarily want the EDA to pursue? EDA commissioners, if you have any additional context to provide, feel free to do so right now as well.
I just have a question about number three, and I realize it's not something that you have amended, but establishing New Prague's competitive edge. Can you explain that in a little bit more detail?
Yeah. Great question. So it's more about marketing, it's more about positioning New Prague so that when somebody is looking for a place to go to start a business or relocate a business, you have information and resources available on your website. Right now, there isn't any information on the city's website about economic development, sites that may be available, but, you know, target industries that you're looking to go after. But how are you breaking down this negative connotation about New Prague is too far away from the metro? You're in between 21 and 169, 35 is still a drive from New Prague. So how do you get over that hurdle to show that, you know, New Prague is a great place to do business? So that's really what this goal is trying to get at.
Question as well, is this capturing? We spend a lot of our time supporting existing businesses, our industrial. This capture?
Yeah, because there is a lot of retail, and there's a lot of service industry.
We have an entire program where we visit all the businesses.
Right.
See what they need, see if there's city services we can protect them with, and we kind of get the pulse of the community. Some of them are industrial and commercial, a couple are just.
I mean, could that come under number one, though? Of fostering that supportive environment?
It just specifically calls out industrial and commercial. I just want to, you know, we spend time doing things that aren't industrial and commercial. Just wanted to make sure.
Nick, can you give an example of what would fall out of industrial and commercial?
Or two businesses?
Retail?
Yeah, I mean, you're talking about retail and food service, I suppose, right? Specifically, or? I mean, yeah, we're not really commercial or industrial.
I mean, we go and, we go and visit service businesses, yeah. We go and visit things that aren't, I'm not industrial.
Sure. I mean, I'm almost entertainment, when you think about it. So like, the bowling alley probably wouldn't fall in either one of those.
Yeah, Dairy Queen's not industrial.
I wonder too, Nick, if some of this is parsing words then too?
Just want to make sure.
Yeah. Exactly. And I'm only saying, I know, because I'm a speaker, and I also am a planner of my life. When you get to the planning world, commercial almost envelops anything that's not like heavy manufacturing. And so whether it would be painting, or, we'll say, recreation, or IT services, or the whatnot, would be lumped under commercial in the general description.
Let's clarify. Part of the road has to.
But no, I mean, but that does bring up a good point. I mean, part of this is supposed to be able to be an advertisement for the EDA when it's all said and done, and we want to make sure the language reflects what we are trying to say.
But that, you know, it's all-inclusive.
Yeah. It should be a broad temple.
Nebulous term, you know, that we just need to kind of rethink that, the wording of the number one.
Yeah.
How is it taxed? You know, property taxes? Is it just industrial, commercial? Is that the levels that we have?
That's exactly what I was gonna bring up. I, like Josh, I'm looking at this from a property tax revenue standpoint. And as far as the tax classifications that Minnesota has, it's industrial and commercial. And so, service industry, retail, would fall under that commercial tax classification. So that's how I look at it. But, to your point, we're losing trades, we might be losing entrepreneurs who, you know, may not have a physical location. So is that a priority? Do we, do we want to try and have some goal centered around business development? Almost like targeted towards entrepreneurs?
I don't know.
So instead of commercial business, just have industrial and business? So business can be even, a larger umbrella that encompasses more than just commercial?
If you're gonna go that route, I, I, where would I want? All my life in EDA.
Yes.
Only that one. Maybe creating or enhancing. Part of it, talking about overall economic development. Obviously, other businesses. Let's figure comprehensive.
Could that be put into like, number three? Establishing New Prague's competitive edge via marketing and something adding, enhancing all types of businesses into this, you know?
Yeah, and I mean, certainly there's some strategies that probably could fall under multiple goals, so. And maybe it would be helpful if we, you know, look at some of the strategies, so you can also see what, you know, we're envisioning for each goal as well. So if we go to the first goal with fostering the supportive environment for New Prague's businesses, we're looking at encouraging growth and diversification of the local tax base. We're looking at identifying land availability for future development. I know the New Prague EDA has done a great job with establishing the industrial district. I don't necessarily think the next five to 10 years, they need to go out and actively buy new land to try and expand that proactively, or, you know, start a new industrial district somewhere else. It could take more of a reactive stance on this to support additional industrial development when it comes available. So that, when we look at doing economic development, resources are limited. You have human capital, you have time, and you have technology. And so, not putting all of your eggs in one basket with buying land when it might be more expensive today than it was 10 years ago. We don't want to use up the entire fund balance that the EDA has just to do that industrial district. So, we're trying to take a step back and take a supportive stance and more of a reactive role there with the industrial sector. We also have a strategy about identifying target industries for attraction. So, when we say, like, the business environment, climate within New Prague, what types of businesses are here? Could there be any spin-off potential from these businesses to attract somebody else who might be using a by-product from another? So, like industries, but also complementary industries is what we're looking at. And then also, continuing to strengthen the business retention and relationships, you do a great job of that with doing the site visits to understand what your business owners and the businesses within New Prague are experiencing. You're taking that feedback and you're doing stuff with it. So, this, this strategy is essentially just continuing to do what you're already doing and possibly, you know, expanding it just a little bit more.
I don't know what the EDA or council would think here, but maybe there could be an additional strategy on the home-based business and, you know, that type of thing. We don't explicitly call that out, but I think that's been a big part of our growth from, you know, home business on up. You can take that, a number of businesses, Nick, your business is probably a good example of that, starting in, you know, out of a home and then growing from there. CVF Racing, you know, is another one that's continued to, you know, grow. So, I think it's been important. I don't know if there's agreement on that being, you know, fostering that level from, you know, ground level on up, but I think that's been important for our growth in the industrial part.
Yeah, you think of Tokowski and Gravers, too. Started in a home and grew into a storefront. So, we do have those.
I did too.
Yes.
True.
Didn't, didn't like MVE as well, and CF, CVF, and a lot of.
I think what most.
Most of them did.
Yeah.
So I think adding that makes a lot of sense, because we wouldn't have what we have without, without that.
And then, yeah, we can take the commercial out of the goal to make it just industrial businesses, but that's what we've been looking at for strategies for this particular goal. Okay. Moving on to the next one then, we've had the promote redevelopment opportunities and reinvestment in existing properties. The EDA specifically called out the downtown area, the west end of town, the old flower mill in the city center. So, marketing these priority redevelopment sites to the market, actively doing that on your website, making sure that when staff goes to conferences, or maybe sending them to broker events or real estate summits to have some brochures created so that they can share that with potentially investors, developers, bankers, stuff like that, to make sure the information is getting out there to not just people within New Prague, but the broader market within the area.
I guess something with Scott County CDA that, one time we.
We.
Here on their website, and there's a link, and then would show.
Yep, so we have a State of Minnesota marketing for all the cities, cut lowest. We do have our, like, our industrial park lots entered on there. It also ties into the commercial MLS. We could be doing more with that. Again, it goes to the marketing point. And I think getting the word out from local Realtors that are typically residential, aren't reaching that market, so, you know, offering that up. We can, we can list sites, but then, if we do that, they're gonna have to buy into the broker fee, you know, if they get a hit from that type of sale. I know there's sometimes hesitancy on that, but it definitely opens up a bigger audience to our property down here.
I mean, you could also invite developers, you know, to come down here, take a look at these sites, sit down with city staff and say, you know, these are the challenges from the private sector that you might encounter. Maybe you'll get some interest through what we call developer roundtables, where you just try and market your sites to specific individuals that you want to see some type of development, whether that's residential, commercial, industrial, what have you, that could also be an option here. Listing out the tools within the toolbox for not only the EDA, but the city council to be able to provide some level of public assistance. Certainly, you don't have to provide public assistance if it's not warranted. I do strongly believe that it should be reviewed on a case-by-case basis, so this isn't a blanket thing that if somebody requests public assistance, they will get it. But at least being upfront with what the expectations of the EDA, what the expectations of the city council are, with maybe desired qualifications and minimum qualifications, so they know what to expect or what not to expect when it comes to public assistance. Yes?
Have an incentive. Couple different areas.
Business of the city policy, yes.
Yep, so that's another one on here, which I believe comes. No, it's. Enhancing it, but also marketing that as well. Making sure that it's public on the website, so if somebody's, you know, searching on Google, they're gonna be able to find the application and the policies.
Like you said, it's not that you will get it, but that we are willing to talk if you are willing to provide these things.
I mean, maybe something through this is, could the EDA establish revolving loan fund? To provide maybe low-interest loans, or no-interest loans, or forgivable loans to businesses who are rehabbing existing properties within the downtown area, to encourage people to reinvest within the, that corridor? Maybe that's something to take a look at, that is not necessarily an incentive that you currently have access to, whether it's tax abatement or tax increment financing. Certainly, there would be a capitalization aspect to that, but it's just another, you know, option that might be out there if you're looking at trying to get reinvestment within a specific area like the downtown or the, the west end of town.
That's okay.
Yeah, yeah. This also could look at reviewing zoning and land use regula, regulations. Is there anything that has been prohibitive to get development or reinvestment to happen? From setbacks to height requirements, to parking requirements, certainly you don't have to change anything, but it's just a strategy to make sure that you're not limiting any potential opportunities within these areas.
And I think specific to that, Keith, you know, we are working with Bolton-Mink on the UDC, the Unified Development Code for zoning and subdivision. And that stemmed from the comp plan that was adopted late '24 and then amended in early '25. But, that area of the former mill and the former creamery property was identified as a downtown flex district without a specific new name, and that is something that will come out of the UDC update. The building at the mill is unique, Austin knows this firsthand, being a tenant in there. So I think there's gonna have to be some different, you know, standards for that, that account for that, but yet, gets a desired outcome for the council and the EDA to have that redevelop, you know, and act as a catalyst for the remainder of that property. POPS will do that to a degree. We're trying to, you know, leverage other small cities, former small cities development program money to continue that investment in that area, but a lot of it starts at that zoning information, and we're, we're working on that. We'll have a similar meeting to this with the planning commission when we get a draft together to talk through that. So, they kind of will go hand in hand.
Next ring that I can, because I.
Moving along to the next goal then, with establish New Prague's competitive edge. Defining this a little bit more, so I mean, you have a great brand identity with the tradition of progress for New Prague. So, promoting that to the broader market, to make sure that message, you know, produces results within the city. That marketing campaign aspect of it, to take down these negative connotations, to convince people to relocate businesses here or establish new businesses. And that's, yeah. The, the other one specifically calling out is the quality of life. That is a very strong aspect of New Prague, why people move here. So definitely honing in on that to making sure that it's front and center with your marketing campaign is the whole quality of life, laying out why it's beneficial to move to the city. And then, enhance workforce and talent development. You do work with the CDA, you do a great job with the public schools. Is there any way of improving the relationships that you have to make sure that people who are graduating from high school, the trades that are within the city, the employment opportunities that are in the city, to make sure that people come out of high school or people can go to a community college to get a degree, to have jobs at businesses within New Prague? So making sure that you have the right employment sector to fill the demand of jobs within the city.
And I think part of that, too, is working with the school and the counselors, because when you look at the newspaper and you see the graduating class, most of them are going off to a four-year college instead of trades. And we have a lot of trades here in New Prague, plumbing, electrical, HVAC, that could use these newer, younger people to come into those trades. And I just don't see that being promoted specifically through the school district. It's, no, go get a four-year degree, which most of us know costs a lot of money, and you don't end up working in the area in which you moved from school.
Well, I know, was it, is it their second year now they're doing it there? Seven year will be. They have been doing a. Career tech. Like a career in tech, like a trade show almost, and they've had pretty good turnout from area businesses. In fact, some of the businesses we've spoken to have said, yeah, like, we've found one or two interns, and we, we've sent that intern off, and they come back in the summer, and then sometimes they work for, sometimes they don't. But, I do know, just at least talking to the administration, in the school's defense, like, they see that there's a hole, and they're trying to figure out how they can meet that.
Once again, a general grant to hire the workforce development coordinator, which is her second year of that grant, too. She's actively still teaching, but also reaching out. But it's here, and trying to get a better understanding of what do students, in order to be successful, come to work here. There are efforts being made, definitely more, probably recently, there, there being.
That's good to hear.
Okay. Then, moving along to the fourth goal with the support housing opportunities to meet community needs. So, this is where we call out the explore consolidation of the EDA with HRA. Assess existing housing stock and housing growth needs. Collaborate with the city to encourage infill development, but also identify other areas for residential subdivisions. The one thing that the city lacks right now are the single-family homes, lots. So is there, you know, potential annexation in the future? You know, we don't want to make sure, we're growing too fast, but we want to make sure that we can support the employment, the workforce that we have here with being able to find a place to live within the city. So it's, it's more of a supporting aspect and an evaluation aspect, rather than being proactive and specifically providing assistance. But that's what we were thinking for the goals and strategies here, unless anyone feels differently.
I have some questions on the, why do you feel that the EDA needs to be involved with the housing and redevelopment? Voting purposes, or?
For what purposes, do you say?
For voting.
Voting?
Well, if we're, if we consolidate it, then we all vote on, I would assume.
So I think the idea with, so currently, the city council of the HRA, and historically, the HRA in New Prague has not done a ton of work. There are some communities where the HR is very, very active in a lot of stuff that they do. And so I think the exploration of consolidation says more of, do we take that off? Is, is there any benefits to taking that off the city council's plate and giving it to the EDA? Or is the city council continual? That was kind of the thought. And I think a lot of times, this, I know, I mean, I got one of my degrees. I got one of my degrees specializing in economic development, like housing is a big deal in economic development now. For the very reasons as we've talked and visited with businesses, I'd love to hire three employees, but. It's really hard to attract people and there's no place to live. And so some of economic development is actually shifted toward trying to support housing to get people to come in. And so this is, this is basically just saying, is is it worth exploring like it for the EDA um to take on the HRA role? Within the community and would there be a benefit?
Right, my feeling is, and I don't want it to sound pessimistic, but it probably does, but the EDA has their agenda, which goes against. Maybe the council. Or the ones that are elected. They're appointed, so there there's a conflict there a little bit. I mean, I think the EDA should understand, look at why Keyland pulled out of a hundred and sixty houses. Was it a tax situation? Was it, there was too many regulations? Was there? I'm just curious, did we ever get any feedback why Keyland decided not to go with those hundred and sixty homes?
I think a lot of it was financial. And, you know, development is not inexpensive at this point, and I think at this point they're looking at. What we do, they're waiting for a comp plan to get updated first of all. Second of all is. Can we look at, and we are looking at, uh slightly adjusting minimum lot width and minimum lot size. Ultimately, they gotta get more units in on a street to make it more, you know, cost effective per unit, per linear foot. Whether that's palatable to council or not, I don't know, but that's something we'll talk about with the subdivision.
And that is something part of what we talked about with the zoning code, like is it worth shrinking the minimum lot size a little bit so that instead of being able to get two hundred homes in, maybe you get two hundred twenty five. And those extra twenty five homes now can make the cash flow work for the infrastructure that you have to put in.
And that's just one of the. That's feedback we got for that.
There's gotta be some discussion around mortgage interest rates because they are high and. We have homes here in New Prague for sale that are just not moving. And there's some pretty nice homes. And there's a townhome. Here in the general area that the price is very attractive, but it's not moving and the home is beautiful. So you you take a look at the economics of mortgage rates. So right now is not maybe a Bible time to put in a huge development because people right now are a little leery about the economy and the interest rates. The job market is starting to take a little bit of a dive, so you gotta take a look at all of that as being attractive to putting in development. It it would be a beautiful thing for our city, but you don't want to have a bunch of homes built. That's why you came on council and then.
Right.
It it took a dive and they actually became rental homes.
So so, yeah, so Sean, I think this this was put in here as from, I mean, as we've stated and it's been stated in city council meetings, like. A lot of businesses feel like there's not enough housing here. There are people I know, I mean.
That's everywhere though, Josh.
No, no, no.
I could go to people growing right now and they'd say they can't.
No, I get that, but when you, when you talk to, say, the school district and they're like, a lot of our teachers are commuting from Lakeville. And then when they decide to buy a home, they end up just buying a home in Lakeville because now they've lived there for three years and now they don't wanna commute anymore, so now they're just gonna live there. And so the idea is is exploring it, would there be benefits? It's not saying we will, it's just saying that they want to explore it to see if there would be benefits to the city and the EDA for that. Similar to assessing the housing stock and where we potentially have needs. Um, and encouraging infill development on lots that are already annexed where the. I know um a good example is, as we get over towards Raven Stream, we've got a lot of infrastructure, roads, sewer, water that are all sitting over there. That are aging without being used. And it's far cheaper to build over there right now than it would be to build brand new roads and whatnot, because now that's infrastructure we have to put in. So a lot of this is, as as Keith said, explorations and like what can we do? And is it something that we would want to do?
I think it, I think the EDA would be a good resource. They're not necessarily making decisions, but they can provide a lot of. Beneficial information.
That they could pass to the elected officials.
Yes.
To make that choice.
Yes.
Right. I don't mind something like that. I I envisioned that this was gonna be a blending of the two EDA and.
But they'll say consolidation, so I guess I would like to understand.
Yeah, I just made the assumption that that ends, they have, they have a voting and there's seven of them where there's only five council. But yet they're all appointed, they don't answer necessarily the taxpayer, except for the representatives. That sit on it, so that's my concern. And my concern would be, for example, the Yellow Tree development. My question would be, wouldn't it be better if we somehow lowered the commercial and industrial tax rate? So these guys could pay people a little higher wage where all of a sudden it does make sense to drive from Bell Plain or whatever else. Because we are at a disadvantage because we're not on a major thoroughfare like Elkhorn Market or Bell Plain or Jordan. It it just is, but. Biggest concern that I hear, and I still hear it even on at the new apartments there, is that their apartments aren't. Aren't um. Really well tolerated and, right, I think from a standpoint of, they don't wanna see a hundred and fifty three unit building over there with. Subsidized either through uh TIF money or through. Or tax abatement or. Any type of subsidized housing through the the state or where that's.
But yet to attract people, and I'm sorry, I may be getting off. Track here. There are a lot of younger people that don't want homeownership. They wanna be able to shut their door and leave and do what they please. So we do have to attract those kind of individuals. As employees in our community that don't want the traditional homeownership. Even a townhome. And 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 so I I. I don't want to shut the door to a development like Yellow Tree. I think it's definitely worth entertaining. Just from the perspective of. Attracting a certain age group that just doesn't want. That's coming up more and more and more, and that's why we're seeing these huge apartment buildings in Lakeville and Apple Valley. If you've been in that area. The growth is just incredible and they're leased out, they're rented out, just like that. You know, so there is that attraction.
One of the things is vacancies, they've got all that development, but the vacancy rate. That's where I was too. I was, I needed a reason to say no to the tax base. And that's what it was, is the vacancy rates were so high. In both Lakeville, Shakopee.
Those two, yeah, and I I have, I've heard, actually heard the opposite, and so I can't just disprove what you're saying, but. It just seems that that type of living is very attractive to a lot of people. So anyway, just getting back to the. The EDA, I I think it's just worth exploring, having them explore. But to your point, Bruce, do you have statutory approval? To move something forward without council approval?
Yeah, yeah, and I I do wanna jump in that. Whenever it comes to tax abatement, EDAs and HRAs don't make those approvals. It has to go to city council. For tax increment financing, it has to go to city council to get approval. So y- y- you still retain that power, that authority over the EDA and HRA. We put this goal and these strategies in here. Because housing continues to come up with the discussions at the EDA level. But they feel like they shouldn't be doing anything related to evaluating, assessing the housing stock. Understanding the demands, the vacancies within the market, because that's not necessarily what they're supposed to do. So we just wanted to bring it here for a discussion to say, is this something you want them to look into? If so, this could be an option of, you know, consolidating the EDA and the HRA. But even if we just get rid of that strategy. Giving them the direction to, you know, assess the housing stock and look at some of those things could be helpful.
Well, and they are an advisory board and yes, I would appreciate that kind of information coming back to council. I just would have said explore consolidating these two together. I envisioned a group like this where everybody gets a vote. And they're working off one agenda. And we're working off of another one, perhaps, or it could be. So that's where I was coming from. Ken, I remember Mike Johnson, he's our former city administrator, was able, in our packets, we used on a monthly basis get. A lot of the real estate um numbers.
Oh, it was like a market report.
It was a market report and in that, but along with that came that it, and I. I wanna say it was like seventy percent, but I'll just say half. That half the people living in New Prague drove thirty miles or more to their job. It's it's like seventy, I think.
Most people in New Prague work outside.
I agree, it's like seven, it's like seventy.
Most people that work in New Prague do it all the time.
So. No, I agree, but the point I'm saying is, is that, and and I'll just use me as an example, I I'll drive forty five miles one way to get to St. Paul, so. The fact that I think there's a bigger issue is what I'm trying to get at with not being able to find. People here or businesses here, I think it might be more of a pay and benefit structure or a, you know. I think it'd be, it behooves the EDA to maybe look at, let's lower the tax base for the for the businesses and stuff so they can pay more. Or they can offer more benefits, or they can have signing bonuses or whatever it might take to bring people in to these. Businesses. So whether it's the bank or it's the gun shop or whatever, you know.
But we do have a lot of businesses that are like one or two employees though too, so. I, I mean, I hear you and I agree, like I'm all about taxes, I think everybody is, but I mean, I don't know if that would necessarily, like, we have a lot, we have some big business. Not as much. We're mostly like one and two, maybe five employee businesses here, mostly, maybe myself. I don't have that many.
And is that because we're not on a major thoroughfare? I mean, I think that obviously plays into it.
I think it's a.
Just for visibility, what does, what does a business really want? Most of them, they want visibility, you know.
There's that, but I think we just met with Aaron Hutton at Geisenbauer this morning. And like, one of the things that he talks about is just, yeah, our population, like to have that restaurant base, that that continuing customer. We haven't really hit that magical ten thousand number yet and we're kind of struggling. Get there without having something else to offer, and that kind of goes back to the uh and how we sell ourselves, because we are strategically placed. Like you said, you drive to St. Paul, I used to drive to Eden Prairie every day from my old job. We're strategically placed where you can get to two major highways relatively quickly. But how are we presenting that, you know?
But the question would go, does the taxpayer want? They moved to New Prague for a reason, and I think a lot of people move to it because it has that small town feel. It's not on a major thoroughfare. They don't want big apartment complexes, they. They want more single family homes and I, you know, I think it's important to, anyways, what I I'm. You know where I was going for, I don't wanna waste too much time here, but I, what concerned me was the consolidation. I envisioned that you guys in a round table like this would have voting authority for a particular project that maybe my, I'm hearing from constituents that they don't want. But I'm overrun, or even three of the council members. Because the EDA has a different agenda, which is we need these type of housing here, so.
I guess I looked at it as kind of like what we just did with the police station, you guys gave us direction and we acted upon the direction city council told us to do. We serve at your pleasure. You could kick us to the curb anytime you want, is the way I look at it, so.
I understand, I, you know, that was a different situation with.
Right, but I would assume it would be similar.
The the council was forced to to go to the EDA. I didn't know that was an option until later. Uh, anyways, um, so I don't know, maybe we can, whether it's advise the council or consolidate the council, I just wanna make sure that they don't. Wouldn't be adding to the vote.
Yeah, I I would just say in other communities uh throughout the state that have given their EDA, HRA powers. It's usually just the same makeup that's on the EDA that is also on the HRA. But like I said, you can have it as that advisory, but ultimately with the public hearing decisions for providing public assistance. That has to go to the city council. So it it's a great conversation, so thank you for bringing up, I do appreciate that. Okay, and then moving along to the final goal that we have here, it's secure resources for economic development. So the strategies that we have here are, you know, looking at not just within New Prague, not just within the county. But partnering with deed, partnering with Greater MSP, partnering with the trade and exchange organizations out there. Trying to identify resources available for economic development. Evaluating resources necessary to uh not only for economic development, but to accomplish the strategic plan that we're laying out. To make sure that the EDA has the resources to be able to achieve uh the strategic plan that they're putting in front of them. Review and update public financing, public financing policies, so reviewing the tax increment financing application. The tax abatement application and policy to make sure it aligns with the goals and objectives of the city and the EDA. Um, and then strengthen outside partnerships with local and region, regional funding agencies. So just looking at not only internally, but also looking at externally, how can we support economic development within New Prague? And what resources are available out there?
Have the businesses given you any numbers at all, like? Could use two more hundred plus apartment complexes or? They have any idea, are they looking for those numbers from you guys, or have you reached out to? Maybe it's even ailer's that can tell us. How theoretically you, this is, this is the s- the level that we need to to make sure that we have all these.
Scott County has actually done that.
Yeah, so Scott County did their study, was it twenty twenty two?
Twenty twenty two and they're working on getting that uh for twenty twenty six.
And that's basically what that study is, is they kind of look at the communities and say. This is what we feel like you guys as a, or what your market can bear or would need. Is it, is it overbuilt, is it underbuilt? It's, Scott County's not telling us to do one thing or the other, they're just looking at it and kind of trying to give us that information.
They're like inventory vacancy rates to look at. Max Field is typically hired by the.
Little less, yeah, one hour.
But the last I heard is like. And it was like.
Three hundred.
Three hundred and under, yeah.
Yeah.
It was the twenty twenty two one. I mean, no, no businesses specifically said, and that's a lot because like, just take Aaron from Geisenbauer, he didn't have time to do that kind of.
Well, I know some of it too, I mean, we've had businesses, yeah, that say. We've got three employees that commute, they love to work here, but they tell us they can't find a house.
Right.
Or they can't find a place to live, or we we've got this person who wants to live in this type of apartment, or this person lives in this type of apartment, but. Yeah, outside of businesses, I guess, knowing that, hey, we've got seven employees that would really like to work here or live here, but they they just can't find a place to live. That's kind of what individual businesses. And I think when we talk to like a CVF or a chart or the school district, like they're able, they give us a little bit bigger numbers, because they're like, hey, we just hired. I think they said seventeen new teachers at the EDA meeting. And I don't know this for a fact, so don't write this down, Patrick, but maybe fourteen of them. End up commuting in and they're young people. Actually, the thing, we just hired a new employee right fresh out of college that was looking for a place to live here in town. And uh kind of needed a place sooner than later and, I mean, this new building wasn't open yet and I think they. Just recently uh leased up a place in Burnsville where they were able to find a place that fit their needs, but. How they have to commute and they were, they were kind of hoping they could live here because no one wants to have to commute if they don't have to, but. I think, yeah, outside of like the major um studies that the, we'll say the county commissioned, we'll say the study. That's kind of where you get that big generalized information. And then it was a city, how you, what you wanna do with that information is up to you at that point.
Do we have any word on what the new apartment building is now? I know I saw they have now leasing, is it completed, is it not?
October, I think is what I.
Yeah, they're gonna be um having move ins after October first. We were just doing final um inspections started last week. And I talked, actually talked to their uh project manager from uh Ebert this morning, actually. He indicated that leasing is going well, they don't like to typically share, you know, how well they're going, but he said it's it's going very well, so.
Well, that'll be a good test market for us too. If they hit thirty out of the fifty one units and they sit there. We'll know, because there's leasing signs, but if there's a waiting list, we'll know because people tell, I'm on the waiting list.
That's, that's a great indicator, lease up to occupancy. How quickly did it happen? Was it over six months? Was it over eight months? So, yeah, absolutely. And then I would say the the housing assessment study that the county is doing. It's good, um but also when you do your business site surveys and visits. Understand the positions that employers are not able to fill, what are those wage levels? Because that will really influence what they could support for a house or support for. Because that will really influence what they could support for a house or support for rent within New Prague, so. Do those jobs, at least what they pay for, could they support some level of housing within New Prague? Why are they not able to find a place to live, to work there? I think that's at the core of what the EDA should be evaluating as well.
Well, again, it goes back to, yeah, it'd be nice if we. Helped our businesses give higher wages. Because the one thing that apartment dwellers typically are, maybe now this new generation isn't, but they're much more transient. Uh, they're probably at lower paying jobs, which means they job hop a lot for. Fucking hour, whatever it is, and, um. I I don't know if that's in, if you're tailoring a, a large apartment complex to that. I think that just adds to. The the level that they, the developer can actually build or the quality that the builder can. So then you got an apartment complex that's ten years old and it wasn't built to premium standards and it ends up being. Down and. By lowering rates compared to other cities. I think New Prague should strive to. A premium.
But that can happen in the housing market also. I just know in my age group, like I'm the only one of my friends that owns a house, they all rent.
And there's a mix of apartments, studios, one, two, and three. It's a variety of living styles and budgets. Has to be up to building code, as you will know. I don't. Brought this up before, Sean, of, you know. Nicely built, either substandard, but I just don't see that happening, and especially with the Apple Street. Properties that they've built in the past, they're certainly not substandard.
Now, some of them, ones that they did really flopped though. Minneapolis where they got the, they got a whole block to try to develop.
Well, Minneapolis is not a desirable place for most people to live.
But you did, you will remember what Ebert said though, is that, well, we're just gonna have to make those units a lot less nice if we, that tax abatement didn't come through. Remember, they were gonna make, they were still gonna build.
But but what do you, what do you mean by, what do you mean by quality?
The amenities, though. Oh, I do recall saying, I do recall them saying that, that was absolutely. Maybe it was at the planning commission then, do you remember that, Ken?
I think they talked about like, there might be a, a difference in, you know.
I heard like.
Finish.
The amenities.
If you sit at a sports countertop, you go with laminate.
Correct, right, right.
Big deal.
Um, is there a way you can get us some same reports that Mike used to get us?
Yeah, we can, we can certainly look into it, like I said, I'm I'm not aware of what the reports are, so.
I know what they were, I don't know where he was getting those, but we can look into that, yeah, they were like a.
The information I just spewed out, um, she kind of looked at me like, well, where do you get that information? Was like. I went through the Minnesota Real Estate Association first. And, um, they gave me kind of an idea. And. They are all very guarded about numbers, for sure. So if you can get that market report, and if you can't get the vacancy rates for like Shakopee or Lakeville. Um, go through the Minnesota Real Estate.
Yeah, we, we can certainly.
Yeah, maybe zero in on cities that are more of our population. Belle Plaine has a large apartment building over by their cobars, you know, so that might be kind of interesting. Understand what's going on there.
Yeah, yeah, we will, we can certainly dig as much information.
Yeah, and there's other programs like CoStar out there that shows housing demographics and demand. And the county assessor might be a good place to go too, because, I mean, they're the ones who are ultimately placing values on. Apartment buildings, so they would have a good pulse on what the vacancy rate is, what home or like apartments are selling for, stuff like that, so. There's resources available out there, it's just compiling it all together. So, great, great discussion, great conversation, I do want to respect everybody's time here this evening. As far as next steps, we will go back, refine the goals, refine the strategies from today. Uh, we'll begin drafting the strategic plan and working with staff to start generating what those action items would be to start achieving the strategies and ultimately the overarching goals. We're gonna look at putting some timelines associated to when action items should be completed. Whether it's short term, midterm, or long term. This plan we're looking at for the next five to ten years, so it's not everything that is in this plan has to happen right away. It can take time, um, it can happen as things come up. I know Ken has mentioned some things that you're already doing as a city that, you know, would have inevitably been in this plan. So you're already starting to check things off, um, from that overall plan. We'll establish tracking metrics to help make sure that the goals that we have in. In the policy, the EDA is working towards those, whether it's looking at. Tax base growth, whether it's looking at a specific classification as far as that valuation growth over time. Um, new jobs coming in, um, deed puts out quarterly metrics on job and wage information. So just monitoring that to see where are wage levels going within New Prague, metrics like that. Um, ultimately, our goal is to have the final plan adopted later this year, whether that's in November or December. Um, we will be bringing this back to the EDA before it's ultimately shared with the city council. Uh, but that's just a general timeframe and plan that we have, uh, laid out at this juncture. So with that, I appreciate everybody's time, thank you.
Any other items to discuss, not on the agenda? Okay, I got a motion for adjournment, I'll second it, Paul in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you everyone for your time.